Thank you Sheriff. Our first order of business this evening is our prayer and pledge. Our pledge will be led by Commissioner Wheeler and our prayer will be led by Commissioner Williams.
Do I push?
No, I should have you turned on. Why don't you take Commissioner Carragher's mic? There you go.
Our Father, we thank you that we can gather in America, that we're free to do your business through counties and cities and states and our nation. Give us wisdom tonight. Let us be calm and just reason together what is best for this county. We thank you that we can gather tonight, but we also want to remember the family of Corey Gage, a longtime employee of this courthouse. Be with them as he died unexpectedly this week. We also pray for Mayor Grandy's wife and losing his, her father. Be with all of us because we do know that we all have a limited time on this earth and may we continue to serve you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please join in slither flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He's left me alone over here.
All right, if you'll go ahead and indicate your presence here this evening, we'll go ahead and conduct our roll call on the screen. Okay, looks like we have fourteen present, one absent. Our next item is the approval of the agenda for this special call session of the Board of County Commissioners. This session, we will be considering discussion and possible action regarding the FY twenty-two budget. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as it's presented to you tonight? Motion made by Commissioner Carragher, seconded by Commissioner Williams to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. All opposed, like a sign. The motion carries and the agenda is approved. All right, first we'll move now into the public comment and we will go ahead and take our first speaker this evening. Remember, your comments are limited to three minutes. When you come up to the podium, please speak into the microphone and give, give your name and address to the clerk. When your three minutes is up, I'll let you know and we appreciate your comments tonight. And our first speaker tonight is Scott Holly. Scott, if you'll come up to the podium, please.
Y'all, excuse me, I'm tired. Most of y'all know me and my wife run four businesses here in Washington County, Johnson City. How y'all doing tonight?
Good.
Good. I wrote this down, actually I typed it out before I left to come in from work and I was in a hurry, but I'm just gonna read it from the paper. A lot of you know me, but if you don't, my name is Scott Keith Holly. And I'm a Christian conservative Republican and I will be running for a position of Washington County Mayor in 2022. I want you to know that I'm strictly against the plan, strictly against the commissioners' plans, whichever ones y'all are. I'm strictly against it and taking funds from the both of the county and the city school system. This is not a way to make our schools better for the better of met education, our children, and for a member of the county school board, Mitch Meredith, to stand publicly and state it's not that much. Well, it's a lot when it comes to your teachers, no equalization in Washington County, your teachers.
Mr. Holly, if you'll direct your comments to me as the chairman, please.
His teachers, our teachers, his teachers, whatever. In other words, if you work for the school board and you're also a chief administrator, you know you shouldn't talk from both sides of your mouth. Let me get on with my conversation. It's not that much while he's employed by the county, it's ridiculous and the comments like that can, when someone talks out of both sides of the mouth and tries to ride on both sides of the fence. Alls he's really doing is letting everybody know that he does not have our children's best interest at heart. A man's who's own mother, and I've thought the world of her, Martha Meredith, was on the commission in nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety, the resolution to give the money to the schools for the children. And I have a copy of that if anybody wants to see it, the resolution right here in my hand, right here. I know for a fact the majority of those signed this resolution in the nineties would be undoubtedly appalled by the mere suggestion of what is taking place here. And not only for the children, but this was also to take away from the salaries, benefits of our teachers and teachers who are already leaving. Although twenty twenty-four, as that person stated, it's not gonna have effect, yes it will. Washington County and Johnson City because of low pay benefits and to say that it's not that much. If you break it down effectively, it takes away about two hundred dollars per child. And that's a lot of money. Two hundred per child. What kind of county would do that? What kind of county would put their children, and I'm about done, in other obligations above our children and their education? The pandemic we had, if it's hard enough on us in our school system, with now trying to take the funding away from them, funding that has been enmarked for schools and education since nineteen ninety by that person's mother. I just want you to know that I stand with both the city and the county school boards.
Mr. Holly, your time's expired. We appreciate you coming up.
Thank you, that's about all I had to say anyway.
All right.
You have a blessed night.
Thank you a lot. You too. All right, our next speaker is Chad Fleener. Chad, if you'll come forward to the podium, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, appreciate y'all having me here tonight. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for recognizing me to get able to speak. I'm not gonna say a lot of things that's been said in the paper and y'all got the emails and phone calls as well. And just want to tell y'all that I want you to vote no. This pandemic's been tough on the school systems, no doubt. Y'all got a tough job. You're all sitting here tonight, like me and my colleagues have sit here this week and it's been a pretty rough seat. And there will not be some people happy no matter what y'all do. But we want to support you the way you are. You're all commissioners for the school board. We need to work together. Whatever's done here tonight, we're gonna continue to work together. We're gonna let bygones be bygones, we're gonna move on. But I would ask you, the last two years, the reason we've had an increase in our fund balance, in my opinion, is because we had a lot of cost savings this past year. But we have no idea what the needs will be for our children this next year. We don't have a clue. We don't know what kind of test scores we're gonna have or anything like that. It's gonna be a tough year, but we've got some great teachers. And we've recognized that this year and we give them a four percent increase and it was well deserved and they've needed that for a long time. You know, last year, the county commission voted to take a million dollars away from the capital fund balance for the schools. And that was a tough decision. You all made that and we had to move on. We moved on. You know, you're all sitting here tonight and one point six million dollars is on the line for the county, one point five for the city. And that's a huge amount that we really need. It's not reoccurring funds, we know that, it's in our fund balance, that's the reason we don't give a ten percent raise, that our teachers really deserve. But I please ask you, please find the money somewhere else or at least take one point six million for this one year. Please, don't leave it empty handed. In nineteen ninety, when you, when the commission, and nobody here was serving on that commission at that time, except Mr. Chairman maybe.
No, I was not here.
No offense. No offense, sir. But, you know, it was left like that and nobody knew it. And if we'd had time to recognize that we were gonna lose one point six million, maybe we could've done something different. I read today where the city had already passed their budget on, it was already final. You know, we brought you the best budget probably we've ever done in three years I've been on the school board. It was budget neutral, the only thing we did was add for more sales tax. It got sent back to us and said, don't, you know, don't expect that much sales tax. So we didn't. We sent you one, probably the best one we've ever done. And we had a lot of needs, there's a lot of things on our wish list that we couldn't put on there. So please, please, please vote no tonight. Let's find it somewhere else. But regardless, you're all friends, you're people, the community, we're gonna work together. And I respect every one of you and the job you're doing, you're county servants, and I just want to thank y'all tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chad. All right, our next speaker is Carrie Estra. Carrie, if you'll come forward to the podium, please. Haven't seen you in a while, Carrie.
I know y'all have missed me.
I know, I know.
It's been since Jonesboro School Celebration, so it is good to see everybody. I'm Carrie Estra, twenty-one Mockingbird Court, Jonesboro. I just wanted to come and speak to y'all about the sales tax reallocation. Most of you know I'm very passionate about education, I'm very passionate about our school system, our teachers, our kids. It really, I was really shocked to see that we were, this was even an idea. I know y'all are in a tough spot, I know y'all have a lot of other things to fund. But education is, every single one of you sitting here was a part of public education in some, some form or fashion. Everybody's sitting back here, we all went through public education. If it wasn't for funding of public education, none of us would be where we are today. These teachers and these school board members went through the worst year of their entire life. I'm not saying you all didn't, but they had to deal with me wanting these schools to back open and they had to hear from me daily. So trust me, they heard from me all year because I wanted my kids back in school. But the funding of our schools with BEP funding, I understand that it is, it's a very hard process to explain to an average person. But I do, I do understand it, but I also understand how much other school systems spend per pupil. The comptroller's office has these fancy new spreadsheets for us that tells us how much is spent per pupil at each school system. It was stated in the news that Washington County spends the most or above average on education. And that is simply kind of not true. You all have to pay more than some counties, not all counties, because of the way the BEP formula works out. Because you all, they say Washington County has a better, y'all have more money to pay it than some other counties do. So I understand you're all's responsibility is a little bit higher than some other counties. But Greenville City Schools, I'm starting with the highest, they spend one, eleven, excuse me, sorry. Per pupil is eleven thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars. Johnson County is ten thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars per pupil. Kingsport City is ten thousand, six hundred and ten dollars per pupil. Rogersville City is ten thousand, three hundred and thirteen. We can keep going through the counties, Carter County is ten thousand and six dollars. Then we get down here to Washington County, Tennessee, and it is eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars per pupil. That's a huge difference. This school board in the last three years has done an amazing job at trying to be good stewards of our money. Because these numbers tell us one of two things, either we're underfunded for education or they're doing a really, really amazing job with the money that they do have. And it's a lot lower than our surrounding schools have. So all I'm asking you is that three million dollars for both school systems is detrimental for us to have the bare minimum. And I'm asking you to look somewhere else to find that money. Don't take it away from these teachers and these kids. Because they worked their butt off this year and this is a punishment to them. And I'm very passionate about these dollars and it may not seem like a lot of money to y'all, but it's a lot of money when we're already underfunded compared to our other school systems surrounding us. Thank you, that's all I have.
Carrie, thank you very much. Right, our next speaker is Jamie Freeman. Jamie, if you'll come forward to the podium, please. Been a while since we've seen you here too, Jamie.
Good to see everybody.
Good to see you.
Mr. Chairman, County Commission, my name is Jamie Freeman, I live at thirteen eighty-nine Highway one oh seven. I'm a taxpayer parent with a son who attends Washington County Schools and a public school teacher entering my twentieth year this fall. These are my views and not my employer's. After the pandemic was officially announced and schools sent teachers and students home to learn virtually, our world turned upside down beyond our wildest imaginations. Immediately, there were fears and concerns of how to feed students not in school, how to ensure all students had access to laptops and internet service, and tremendous concern for the social and physical well-being of Washington County students. Without hesitation, the school system, dietary department, teachers, bus drivers, custodians, central office staff, principals, all organized to bring food, laptops, internet hotspots to students' homes by school buses. Without hesitation, numerous parents began to organize fundraisers to purchase food to deliver to students and their parents' homes, one of which is Carrie Estra. Family as far away as Fort Wayne, Indiana shipped food to David Crockett High School that was delivered to students and parents suffering from the pandemic hardships. We are resilient and met the pandemic challenge with fierceness to overcome the loss of jobs, loss of the safety within the school environment, loss of family members and friends, many of whom we are still grieving. Many of us had loss of our physical health due to fighting the virus, working inhumanely long hours and time with our spouses and children. All of us deserve respect, especially parents, students, and school personnel who work tirelessly to achieve the impossible. But yet, there are a number of commissioners in this room that want to defund education by decreasing sales tax revenues for the school system. This is plainly a big slap in the face for a saw. So why in this world would some of the commissioners sitting here tonight pour fuel on the fire by creating loss on top of the crushing list of traumas that I previously mentioned? This is wrong ethically, it is wrong to rob students, and it's wrong because of the blatant disrespect and hardship it piles on students, parents, and teachers, especially after overcoming some of the most difficult challenges and traumas of our lifetime. Please vote no on the resolution to defund tax revenues that pay for the education of Washington County students and Johnson City students. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Our next speaker is Director Boyd. If you come up to the podium, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jerry Boyd, I currently live at one twenty-eight Yard Spitter in Jonesboro. And certainly, all of you, I believe, know I'm new to the community, serving as superintendent of schools for Washington County Schools. I just want to not, not belabor you with what you probably expect me to say, but I will begin with that. As I've shared and it's been captured, you know, the idea of a one point six million dollar reduction in school revenue as being insignificant to me is certainly so far from the truth. Just as an example, this year, as, as we were able to with the board's hard work and everyone that was involved in developing the budget across the school system and in the community, you know, we were able to give that four percent raise to teachers and all employees. That was, it was in the amount of two point three million dollars. So one point six million is, is, you know, very close to that amount. We need to do that next year, we need to do that next, the next year, and we need to do that the next year and the next year to get our teachers and our employees where they should be or at least closer. So with removing this revenue source, that certainly is gonna hinder our ability to address what everyone knows we need to address. I just want to also call out, you know, our, our state legislature in their session in the spring recognized the reality of what this past year presented everyone, including school systems and most importantly, from my view, the work that our teachers across the state and in Washington County and other districts and communities had to do, Johnson City School System as well, to, to serve students during a very difficult times, serve our community as we are charged to do. They recognized that there is a need to hold districts harmless for any funding loss. And then they took action and made it happen. They passed a whole harmless bill that prevented districts from going backwards. I ask you, as you consider this change, it would result in us going backwards, to, to vote no. And then also, as we move forward, certainly as we look into future budgets, want to continue to work together with the county, I assure you, we're going to look at every dollar and we're gonna get as much of that and as many of those funds as we can to the classroom. And that, that's a commitment I'm willing to make with the support of the board and everyone that will be working on that, including our county commission. You are, you are the funding body, certainly know that, but our elected school board are the ones that govern the school system, make the decisions about the funds that come to us, how they're spent, and direct me to lead the school system. So working together, two elected bodies, certainly we can, we can continue both to work for Washington County School students but also partner very closely with our Johnson County sister district to make sure we serve all Washington County students to the best of our ability. And, and losing funds would not keep us from doing that, in the sense that we're always gonna strive to serve the students to the best of our ability. But losing funds certainly puts us in, in a position of great challenge and will certainly cause us to, to take steps backwards. I thank you for your time and I look forward to working with you again in the future.
Thank you, Director Boyd. All right, our next speaker is Paula Treese. Paula, if you'll come forward to the podium, please. Paula, it's been a long time since we've seen you down here too.
It is. Hi, my name's Paula Treese. I live at three Pine Timbers Court, Johnson City. I'm a parent in Johnson City Schools and a former Johnson City School Board member. On June seventh, twenty twenty-one, the Washington County Budget Commission, at their regular meeting, discussed, quote, "The allocation of the county's local option sales tax." Mr. Malone noted that a structural correction was needed and moved to have the second half of the local option sales tax be allocated to the general fund. After much discussion, the motion carried unanimously, end quote. Commissioners, this is in the minutes from your agenda packet from Monday night's commission meeting, page one thirty-three, item six. School officials from Washington County and Johnson City were not invited to this meeting. Washington County school officials are usually invited when there's an item that affects them. The motion was to move three point one million dollars away from our schools into the Washington County General Fund fund balance. One point six million from Washington County Schools, one point four million from Johnson City Schools. This is a significant amount considering that both school districts had already finalized their budgets banking on having this money. Eight days later, on June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, Mr. Grandy and Mr. Meredith had a meeting with the Washington County School Superintendent Jerry Boyd and their chief financial, financial officer Brad Hale to inform them of the loss of one point six million dollars to their budget. Eight days later. Not the next day, eight days later. This is leaving just two weeks for them to possibly redo budgets they've been working on for months. Mr. Grandy and Mr. Meredith didn't even have the common courtesy to meet with Johnson City School Superintendent and their financial people. Even though this was one point four million dollars cut from their budget also, this is completely unacceptable. Members of both school boards were not made aware of the situation until June fifteenth also, after the superintendent's, or after Mr. Boyd was informed. With one exception, Mr. Meredith is an elected Washington County School Board member. He didn't have the courtesy to let other members of the Washington County School Board know about this. He has stated on many occasions that one point six million dollars won't significantly, significantly affect Washington County Schools. That's two hundred dollars per student for sixteen thousand students. I think that's a significant effect. When looking at only a bit of a copy of the budget I could find, because it's not posted anywhere, I found a three-page outline. It appears that the Washington County General Fund is almost balanced. Revenues are expected to be forty-three million, four hundred and ninety-one thousand. Expenditures, forty-three million, six hundred and ninety-two thousand. That's just a difference of two hundred thousand dollars. You could probably cut some expenses and come up with that. But yesterday, in your latest budget committee meeting, you added over five hundred thousand dollars in raises and bonuses. and bonuses and cost of living adjustments. This is not what I would call good stewardship when you're already behind. So what's the $3.1 million going to? I think that's a really good question. It appears to fund the fund balance. Washington County has a policy to keep four months' operating expenses in the general fund fund balance. That's like a savings account. So you would be taking money away from our children and our future to fund your savings account, to keep your savings account above $16 million. According to the very abridged proposed budget that I found, the only one I could find, you have eight major funds that have fund balances in the county totaling $58,508,200. That's more than your general fund operating budget. Isn't that enough in fund balances? Don't take away $3.1 million from our schools. Let's keep this investment in our children and our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. All right, our next speaker is Mr. Peterson. I didn't see you back there, Pete, all the way back there in the corner.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Pete Peterson, 601 East Main Street, Johnson City. First of all, thank you for your service in representing myself as a Washington County citizen and all of us that live in the greatest place on the planet. And thank you for a few moments of your time. You know, I think we would all agree that we have worked decades in Washington County to ensure a good future of economic growth, of increased availability of employment, of better jobs, and a more promising future for those who live here now and will live here in the future. The funding of education is a key component of that. I have, I will soon finish my 31st year in work in local government in Washington County. And for at least 31 years, one of the core topics of conversation, planning, strategy, and hopes and dreams has been a better life for all of those who live here now and will live here in the future. So I want to encourage you to pass a budget. I don't know what resolutions you've got in front of you. Just pass a budget. That's really what you're going to be doing, asked to do tonight, as I understand it. That funds education at a level that gives the schools the resources that they need to properly educate the students that are there now and the students that are to come in the future. That is our future. We've worked diligently to develop a workforce of the future. That requires new technology, that requires new equipment, adequate buildings, adequately trained, educated, and compensated teachers. We've worked to ensure that we have better education for our children because better education equates to better jobs. Better jobs equate to more revenue for local governments to use to serve our citizens. The more somebody makes, the more they're going to spend, the more sales taxes you're going to get, the better property taxes you're going to get. You've got to approach education funding as an investment. It's not an expenditure, it's an investment. It is similar to an insurance policy to ensure that things are going to get better. When we get higher wages, we become more attractive to people that want to come here and invest and create new job opportunities because we have a workforce that has the capacity and the education to fill those new jobs that these companies are creating now. As I said, for at least the last 20 years, I've worked very closely with economic development, and for probably the first 15 of those 20, we had a hard-working, loyal workforce, we had plenty of labor. Folks, that's changed. It's changed drastically. We have tried to recruit businesses to Washington County, Tennessee. They love the incentive package, they love the location, they love the hospitality, but we don't have the qualified workforce, and they have taken their two, four, 600 jobs somewhere else because we don't have an educated, trained workforce to fulfill the jobs that they're going to bring to the area. That's a serious problem. We've got to address that. You know, when you have a better educated workforce, we talked about median household income, the median family income in Washington County is 83% of the United States average. So we're 17% below average in the United States as far as medium family income.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes, sir.
You have reached your allotted time, and we appreciate you being here. Could we give Mr. Peterson a few more minutes to finish? No objection, continue, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Commissioners. I usually sit on your side of this, and I know sometimes you wish public comment were quicker. I will be quick.
No, you're fine, you just continue.
So I feel like all of us, as citizens and leaders in Washington County, have an obligation to adequately fund education to the point that we can ensure our students are going to be successful in life. If they're successful, we're successful, whether they go to a four-year college, whether they go to a two-year trade school, or whether they're an entrepreneur that ends up with an idea and they start their own business and create jobs here in the area. You know, we've got to ensure that we continue to recruit and attract new business. Workforce is going to do that. Continued growth in educational excellence will ensure we've got that workforce. So let's continue to fund education to ensure that we have a best-in-class in education in Washington County and work together to ensure the bright future of those students that we're responsible for. I would hate to be in a position to have to look in the eyes of a young person somewhere and say, "Man, I wish you had a better opportunity, but you just didn't get what you needed in school." That would be a terrible thing to do, to have to look somebody's child, your grandchild, your nephew, whoever, and say, "You know, we just didn't have the money. I'm sorry that, you know, you're going to take a job that is going to be less than what your full potential is." So I just respectfully request that the commission fund education at a level that is no less than what it's funded currently. I know you've got a lot of responsibilities that you need to fund. I think you've got a number of different options in finding methods to fund what you need to fund. Chairman Matherley and I talked about a couple of those today. I'm not going to wear out my welcome and get into it now, but again, thank you for your service, thank you for your time this evening, and we're all in this together because we're responsible for not only our future, but also the future of our children. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mayor Wise, I think you're the last on the list this evening. We're glad to see you back here in Jonesboro. I know this used to...
I didn't bring any notes because I'm of the opinion that I should be surprised by what I'm going to say, just like you should be.
Well, we're ready. Let me get my time clock started.
All right, get it started. My name is Joe Wise, and I'm at 305 Hillside Road. I want to thank each of you for your service to Washington County. I know the position you find yourself in is one that is unenviable because less than a week ago, I was in that position. And as you come to approach approving a budget, realize that budgets are statements of value, and they make statements that other people hear even when we don't recognize that they're listening. And so we talk about economic development, and we talk about businesses looking at workforce readiness, but what we say about our community will ring through loud and clear to prospective investors, prospective transplants, anybody looking at Washington County. They're making a judgment about how we value public education in Washington County. I recognize the structural problems that you may be encountering in your budget, but I don't think balancing the budget on the public schools, Washington County and Johnson City, is going to be the way to successfully address it. In fact, I think it has the potential of making a problem worse. There is all kinds of data to suggest that higher education lead to better health outcomes, to higher incomes, to longer lives. The list of beneficial outcomes goes on and on. Let's make sure that the investments, the priorities, and the values that Washington County is voting on tonight reflect our best possible future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Wise. You always have an open door to come and visit us back any time. All right, that'll conclude us of our public hearings tonight, and we will reconvene back into regular session. First item and only item is a discussion and possible action regarding the FY '22 budget. Mayor, do you want to lead us off with any updates or anything on our budget considerations this evening? Mr. Meredith, or you or the mayor, either one.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think there's any updates. I don't want to do this Monday. The committee considered these. Things are projected to be good. I don't think that's bad.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. All right, we'll open the floor up for discussion of the budget documents. Any questions? Commissioner Tester?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have prepared some comments, but I don't want anyone to think that they are meant as an attack of the Budget Committee, or anyone in particular, for that matter. That's not my intent here. Last year, when I made some remarks, unfortunately, I think some people took them as criticism of the Budget Committee, and that was not my intent at that time. I know the Budget Committee has a huge and very tough job, and I appreciate the effort you put in. The comments I want to make are just general comments about our county government, born out of my experience serving as a commissioner for the last almost seven years now. First, I want to talk about our process, because I think our process is as important or even more important than the decisions we make. This is the eighth budget cycle I've been involved in. Yes, eight in seven years. I was elected in 2014, took office September 1, and we voted on the budget on September 29. Devin Porter shaking his head. Some of you are here, and you remember that. The budget was not approved that year until the new commission had been seated in September. I know there are a lot of moving parts, I know there's a lot to coordinate, but we seem to have a hard time getting budget information to the commission and the public with much time for consideration. For instance, this school sales tax proposal only came out in the last couple of weeks or so. Three days ago, we had a workshop where we were briefed on the budget, and yesterday, the Budget Committee met to discuss changes. This afternoon, almost 200 pages of more information was emailed to us, and here we see it without having had time to review it. All the citizens of Washington County should have an opportunity to know what's going on and be involved. Good government is transparent, not rushed, and requires citizen involvement. So thank you to everyone that's here tonight, and thank you to those who spoke to us this evening. I don't think we should vote on the budget tonight for these reasons that I just stated. And if we need to have more meetings next week, let's do it, or the next week, or whenever. And as chairman of the Rules Committee, I'm considering having a committee meeting in July for us to discuss what we could possibly do to try to improve this process in future years. Now, a few comments about the budget. I dug up some information from 2014, chart of the general fund balance, and in 2014, the general fund balance was about 19.8 million. Now it's 16.4. We spin it down and down, and we've been struggling with bumping into our minimum balance. In 2016, we did a 40-cent property tax rate increase, with 32 of it going into a capital projects fund. Now only 20 cents are going to the capital projects funds, so 12 of the 32 were transferred elsewhere. The last couple of years or so, we've been having this discussion of, we have a $3 million gap that we have to fill. How can we transfer funds from one place to another and patch the hole? Mayor Grandy, I really appreciate, sincerely, I really appreciate what you said Monday night about trying to transfer funds from one place to another before asking taxpayers for more money through a property tax increase. I really appreciate that. I also really appreciate the Budget Committee's work in trying to find a solution, creative, whatever you want to call it, for the gap without having a tax increase. But I'm concerned that we patch here and we patch there, and the problem persists. I share the concerns of Commissioner Carragher, that he voiced Monday night about inflation. The Federal Reserve and the federal government are printing money out of thin air and handing it out like candy, and the value of the dollar is going down and prices are going up. Unfortunately, I think we will see much more of this in the coming years, and there isn't much we can do about it. Something we can do, though, about five or six years ago, I stood in this room, and I made some very strong comments about our county having a spending problem. And I'm still concerned that we're not doing as much as we can to limit our spending and look carefully at it. I think it's safe to say that none of us want to cut services, but the situation we're in right now, we're still talking about adding stuff. $208,000 for new positions, $36,000 for lobbying in Nashville, an $80,000 placeholder for a consultant, $55,000 for economic and community development, et cetera, et cetera. I don't want to see a property tax increase this year, or next year, or the first year of the next commission, and I think we should do everything possible to avoid one. Many times, it seems that education is used as the justification for tax increases. Well, if we cut out half of the sales tax going to schools, I'm concerned in a few years, we'll hear, "We need a tax increase for education." So I would like to see us focus our attention tonight on our spending and have a serious conversation about how much we can remove from this proposal. Maybe it's not 3 million, but I think we should take a hard look at the spending side of the equation. And thank you all, I know that was long, but I really appreciate your time to share my thoughts.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Tester.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Or may I say, who's next? Commissioner Carragher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a structural problem. Over the last five years, our cost of living has gone up faster than our revenue has, and that's why we've got a shortfall today. And I don't think taking money out of the school reserves is going to solve the problem. The problem is, we've got to get a handle on our spending, we've got to get a handle on our income. And if the Federal Reserve is right, they're saying, I think in the month of April, it's 4.2% inflation and almost 5% inflation in May, they're forecasting 5% inflation through '21, '22, '23, '24. And that gap between what we take in and what we spend is going to get bigger and bigger each year, and that's what this, I think this governing body needs to take a look at, long-term solutions. And I will vote that we take care of long-term solutions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Harris?
It seems like we're back into the same cycle we've been every year. I agree with Commissioner Tester, but I think back to, over the past few years I've been on the commission, and last year, I can think of several instances, and I think the last was when we just approved to spend a bunch of money for a Boones Creek Music Hall, when I asked the mayor and Mr. Meredith, "Is things like this going to cause us to raise taxes?" And their answer was no. And here we are now, we're short. You know, when we're voting to give money away at every angle, what do we expect? I agree completely with Commissioner Tester, I think it's a spending problem. I think we need to buckle down. Last year, I threw an option out of the library. We've got a library in Johnson City, we've got one in Jonesboro in Gray. Couldn't we consolidate these things and save the county a lot of money? I received some flack on that, but I still agree with that. I think there's places that we can cut. It's definitely not the school system. I agree with what both of our commissioners said, I would not vote to cut them, and it's, I think this is, to me, the worst possible place to start at. I don't know whose ideal it was, I know, I guess, that Mr. Meredith's getting a lot of flack for it, but, and I've had a lot of comments this... this past week from people saying, "Well, how can he be the chief financial officer for the county and also on the school board? Is that not a conflict?" I don't know how you differentiate between those two roles, but, you know, to me, I think it is a conflict. I'm not the one that makes that judge, but personally, I think it is. And I think it leaves a taste in a lot of the parents' mouths that it is. And, but I hope that we move forward, and that we definitely not take it away from the school system or our employees. If we're looking at giving one group 2%, one group 4%, I think that's who we need to take care of first. And I hear the school system's giving 4%. We should give 4%. Our county employees deserve the same. If you're going to spend money, that's where it should be spent, not on all these little pet projects that we're giving the money away like a bunch of drunk sailors every time that we vote on some.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, the floor is still open to our continued discussion on our budget. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Chairman. Hang a minute. This is really hard. I've really appreciated all the dialogue this week with so many different people in our community and the opportunity to really think this through. And to me, it feels like, and I've made this comment a number of times, the school, the re-allotment of taxes with regard to the school felt late-breaking. That's very much a part of the process that you were mentioning. I think there could be some improvements there. But the intentions were to try to fix a problem. Intentions were good, and it has brought out really great dialogue and problem solving and communication. It was really great to hear in more detail from the schools about their budgets, particularly the city schools, since we don't hear as much about their budget on a regular basis. And I've just really appreciated that process. You know, and I tend to disagree around this issue of spending. I feel like Washington County is a place worth investing in, and it's worth investing in projects that beautify it, projects that clean it. It's worth investing in projects that drive economic development, that inspire tourism, particularly tourism that focuses on our heritage, which is quite strong in this region, and projects that increase our security. And these are all examples of things that are, some small spends and some big spends that we've looked at this past year. They are all ways to make Washington County better. So, I would be happy to go through and look at spending, be happy to hear ideas and thoughts about that, but to my mind, we've gone through that, and every time we've chosen to spend money, we've thought through those projects, and we've deliberated on those matters. Those projects, kind of like we were hearing earlier from Mayor Wise, speak to our values about this place. And frankly, there are projects out there that we're not doing, that we ought to do. The county-owned property committee took a tour this week and saw some beautiful spaces in our county that are underdeveloped, underutilized, and could be amazing places for our community to enjoy if we had funds to improve them, make them more accessible and usable. And as Commissioner Carragher points out, you know, we're constantly battling this dwindling reserve, our general fund balance. And so, you know, I personally feel like the time is now to go forward and ask our citizens to chip in. I think that a small or modest increase on property taxes, maybe something like 10 cents, where the average person that has a $100,000 home would pay $25, which is like $2 a month, would be an okay ask of our citizens, given that we have the lowest property taxes in the region right now. And as you have all pointed out, we come back here every year and patch holes. So, that small change could be one that would help us get through this year at least, and then perhaps we can start looking forward. That's all I have.
Commissioner Williams?
I have asked several people, when was the referendum for the local option sales tax, and how was that worded? And it passed, and I got the understanding way back that it was to go entirely into the school operating budgets. Can anybody verify that?
Ms. Wilkinson, have you reviewed any of that information? I don't know if you have or not.
Are you talking about what happened in 1990, or are you talking about the tax increase in 2016?
I guess we will have to put that one on the next agenda and the answer. Commissioner Williams, I don't know the answer to that one either. Ms. Wilkinson, will you review that for us, when you have the opportunity? And you can just send us out a memo or something. I appreciate you doing that. All right, is there any further discussion of the proposal? We do have a budget proposal in the packet tonight, if we want to consider it. Commissioner Malone?
Well, just a few thoughts. I love the diversity of thought, because from commissioners, I have heard one say we need to spend more, and I've heard others say we need to spend less, and I've heard others say long-term solutions, which I want to hear what those are, I guess. I'm eager to hear what those are. I think Commissioner Harris referenced cutting spending, but giving raises, which I'm all for giving the employees a raise, but it's hard to cut spending and give raises. And it's easy to look back and be critical of spending, but we're not talking about spending, you know, the past fiscal year. What we're trying to do is budget for the coming fiscal year. And there are a lot of people in this room that know more about the county's budget than I do, and I will wholeheartedly agree with Commissioner Tester that the county is not as efficient as it could be. I would offer to the county's system, it's certainly not as efficient as it could be. There are opportunities to improve efficiency. But at least in the county's budget, I don't know whether there's 3 million to cut. And that's really, and the hole is really more than 3 million. When you start talking about the raises for employees, I hold at least a word. But when you start talking about the raises, you get into substantially more money, and the hole is bigger than 3 million. 3 million, that's referenced relates to the issue of the local option sales tax. So, I don't see that there's 3 million to cut from the budget, but I am eager to hear from you. It's easy to put the burden on the mayor and/or the director of finance, or even the budget committee, and say, "You got to find 3 million to cut." We went through a painful process last year of trying to find cost reductions, and we found some, but in comparison to the overall budget, they were very meager. And if you think about the structure, our elected officials from each office, you know, for trustee, etc., for property, they don't really have an incentive to come to the budget committee and say, "Hey, I can cut 5% or 10%." They don't have that incentive, because sometimes one will cut 5% and another 10, and then they look at one another going, "Well, why didn't I just cut mine and blow?" So, the structure makes obtaining those cost or expense reductions challenging. So, I don't think there's 3 million there to cut. I think there is stuff there to cut, but it is hard. And I would like to hear from each of you. You say reduce spending. Tell me where. Give me specifics. I don't think it's fair to just push it back on the budget committee and say, "You got to find the cost reduction." So, from my perspective, as a member of the budget committee, I saw that there were really two options to fix and plug the hole that we keep talking about. There were two options. One of them is raise taxes, raise property taxes, which I don't think any of us wants to do. But the other option is to make a change to the local option sales tax, which obviously is not popular, but it is an option. And when you think about the budget and the tax situation, the 1990 commission could not tie the hands with the 2021 commission. We've effectively let that happen. But the 1990 commission could not tie the hands with the commission the following year, or the next year, or the next 30 years, but that's effectively what has happened. So, I would like to hear from you guys. Are there other options? You say cutting spending is an option, but you got to cut, I mean, when you're talking about a $40,000 budget, you got to cut about 8% out. And when you go to 8%, you're not talking about reducing postage or mileage. You're talking about reducing workforce. There's no way to achieve that level of cost reduction without cutting employees. Maybe we could give remaining employees a raise, but to get the 3 million cost reductions, you have to cut employees. And I don't think any of us want to do that. It's hard to provide the services that we need when you're cutting staff. But if reducing the budget is what you want to do, I'm eager to hear from the other commissioners. Give me specific ideas.
Commissioner Harris?
Ask him back. You're on the Budget Committee. Have you all cut anything? Being a Budget Committee member in the last few years, has there been any one thing you've cut? Not that I know of, but you've voted for a lot of new spending. And even this year, Commissioner Tester, he just read off a list of new spending you've added this year. If we're in this big of a hole, why are we adding more? Why did we, for the past year, why was I told by the mayor and Mr. Meredith that we were in good shape? You've heard me ask that, have you not?
Right.
Okay, so, you know, that's what aggravates me. When you hear things, "We're in good shape, don't worry," and then we come at the end of the year, and we're going, "The sky's falling again," and nothing's been cut. If you want me to give you some ideas on cutting, I'll be glad to sit down tonight. I'll send you my ideas I have before. Last year, I recommended the library, but it didn't go anywhere. There's things we can cut, if we want to start cutting, before we cut education, or the Sheriff's Department, or our central services. And as far as a raise goes, that shouldn't even be a question. Our people deserve a cost of living raise. Commissioner Carragher just said what the cost of living's doing. Looked like groceries are costing, and gas. Do you think a 2% raise is fair for our employees? Would you want to have a 2% raise this year? You probably wouldn't. Okay? They deserve a whole lot more.
Yes.
Yeah, actually, what I have witnessed in the business world, people are generally getting something significantly less than 2%.
Hold on, hold on, fellas.
That's certainly what I've experienced. Certainly, I have supported some spending in the past that I thought was justified and for economic development. I support the budgets presented tonight and the things that are included in it. Obviously, we have questioned about how refunding of us the budget. In terms of the library and cutting the library, I think that's a state mandate with a maintenance effort. Not only can we not cut the library, we have, you know, the budget gets increased on an annual basis. So, I don't know that cutting the library is a realistic expense, a viable expense.
All right. All right, let's go ahead. Commissioner Carragher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really don't, this doesn't need to get personal. Over the last five years, I've looked at the numbers, and there's about a 7/10ths of 1% difference between the growth in our income and what our expenses have done. And as my grandfather would tell me, "You don't eat your seed corn to solve the problem." And the problem is that inflation has put our revenue at risk, and inflation in the future is really going to put it at risk. And I think that, you know, we've got time. We've got time to solve the problem. And I think there's enough smart people on this commission that we can solve the problem, and we will solve the problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Davenport?
Yes, I sat here and listened to everyone, and first of all, I appreciate the Budget Committee, the mayor, Mitch, everyone, and how hard you've worked to try to come up with a solution. All right? It's easy to sit here, it's not easy, but it's to sit here and try to come up with answers and say, "You're wrong. The solution you come up with was wrong." We got to come up with a solution, all right? When I chose to run for office, there was four things that I thought about that I was going to stand for. One is going to support my police officers, because I believe if you're not safe, you're not anything. Two, I was going to take care of our schools. I think that's very important. Three, take care of the taxpayers' money. Four, to support my county officials. Those are the things, and I still stand for those today. I will not vote to reduce funding for the school systems, because that's one of my fundamentals. That's not something I'm willing to do. However, that's easy to say, how are you going to cover the fund balance, right, or the gap? This is not an issue that just come up, and we all know it. We've talked about it here. We have used our fund balance to the budget for several years, last year being one of them. So, we balanced the budget last year, I think it was about $3 million. No one should be surprised about that shortfall. We have spent taxpayer money, in my opinion, cautiously. However, things come up that you have to spend money on, and also, we have increases in that you have to spend money on. So, those things have to take care of. And as far as, and I respect every commissioner in here, and I think I've served on a committee with everyone in here, and I know for a fact, by setting through those committees, these commissioners care and want to do the right thing. We may not agree, but everybody has this county at the best in the right place in their heart. I do believe that. However, we voted last year to approve the budget, and we used our fund balance for that. So, if at any time during the year, you voted to spend extra money, we have all added to this problem, any of us, and all of us. If you did vote for any expenditure, okay, even if it was in the budget, and you voted for it, that budget was used, we used fund balance for that, okay? I don't think that we should put this at the feet, this problem at the feet of our school system. That's removing responsibility, in my opinion. We should not do that. We need to handle this on the commission floor, all right? And I realize, if we pull out of our fund balance this year, it could affect our bond rating. And that's pretty serious, all right? It's serious for a lot of things, all right? Number one, I really don't think we're going to borrow the money. If we can't pay for what we have now, I don't think we're going to borrow more money, so I'm not really worried about borrowing money. I am concerned if we have some variation in some of our interest rates that's coming about and how that might affect us. However, by making this decision to move that out of our fund balance and getting borderline on that, it forces this commission to handle the problem. We should not wait till this time next year to start handling this problem. It starts July. It starts tomorrow, okay? But we're here now. So, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to amend the budget, and that motion is to remove the option of changing the distribution of sales tax to the '21-'22 budget. And to make that gap up with our fund balance, the county's fund balance, general fund balance, is how I would make up that $3 million. And that puts the issue at hand at the feet of where it belongs, and that's the commissioners in this room. in this room.
All right, and that's amendment to the budget?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we have a second? Second by Commissioner Williams. So it would be amending both the tax levy resolution, correct? And the budget resolution? All right, I'll open the floor up for discussion or questions. Commissioner Malone?
I am just concerned that this simply kicks the can down the road another year, and I don't think that we will recognize the cost savings that others are talking about. I think before we do what you've proposed, I'd rather see us, I would rather see us make this decision, like you said, in July and August and September and put off approval of the budget. And find those cuts in July, August, and September and not kick that can down the road. If you're serious about resolving the issue, if we vote to approve this, we're just kicking the can down the road, and we'll be sitting in the same position this time next year. I would rather, I would rather we postpone the budget.
Commissioner Jones?
My comment is going to be, just by what process do we make sure this does not happen again? So do we create some sort of task force to work exclusively on that issue, independent of what the Budget Committee's doing? Could we have that task force looking at spending, but also ultimately, you know, what kind of tax increase do we need to be looking at? I think we all know that we can't go forever without a tax increase, and there are things we want to get accomplished. What will that look like? And starting to envision, if it's two years down the road, or four years, whatever it is, just that little bit of a longer term, kind of like you were saying, longer term planning, can we get a task force in place? Can that be part of? The Budget Committee has to do the budget every month and has kind of like a regular array of stuff that's coming through, so I don't know. I just wonder if we need to articulate a process by which we hold ourselves accountable to having that conversation, if we don't try to just get it done this summer.
Commissioner Carragher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Does that put an end to the question before the school board? In other words, are we taking, with your motion, off the table, taking money out of the school board's reserves?
Yes, it is taking that off the table. Yes, sir. And Commissioner Malone, I understand your question. I don't think this is kicking the can down the road, because it puts us in a position that we got to do something. We have to address something. If we just move money like we've done from one fund to the other, that's kicking the can down the road. But once we get to a critical point, and we're getting, our general fund is at that critical point, we have to take action. We don't have any other way. So that moves us to that critical point that we're not kicking the can down the road. It gets us our budget, it gets our budget passed, and it gives us reason to move and move quickly, so we're not in the same place as we are this year, in the same place we were last year.
Commissioner Wheeler?
Echoing Mr. Malone's comments, I think that we, to do that, we have to change our policy and lower them out, which is fine, we do that. But then I think we go right back to where we were last year this time when we did that, and I believe we will be back here next year in the same position. So I echo, you know, as a Budget Committee member, I would say I would much prefer that we put off passing the budget and we do something now, that we not wait for a year and end up back here. When the process starts in February, it is almost impossible, because it moves so fast. This didn't start, you know, but the hole did get created, and we had plans in mind trying to reduce the hole. The hole got to the point where we realized we're not going to be able to reduce it, and the hole's not something that just gets bigger all the time, it gets back and forth through that process. So that did come up soon, so. But we'll be in the same position, because everything will be fine for a while if we reduce that number down in our policy and say that we're within our policy on the general fund reserve balance. And we're going to have other things coming up and dealing with during the summer and into the fall, and I'm afraid it'll get lost. I think we ought to, we ought to put ourselves on a deadline here to get something done. And as far as, I don't think, even if we don't do that and we go to next year, I would suggest this is a whole commission issue, not a task force issue. It's one thing, task force can work for six months and come up with cuts, but if the 15, you don't have eight votes for them, then we've just got to start over again. And I think we ought to, you know, let's meet once a month, special meeting, just on budget until we get this done. If we're going to try to do it this summer, if it needs to be faster and more often than that, fine. But if we're going to try to do that, and I thought we all understood, but if we don't, maybe this is something you kind of get doused in on the Budget Committee, but when you've got all these maintenance of efforts, laws that we can't violate, you've got individual office holders that do not report to us, do not report to the mayor, these cuts are not going to be easy, and we will have to get some buy-in to affect some. So we, you know, we've got a lot of work to do. It's not a problem to try to do that, but 3 million is a whole lot to try to trim out of this budget. And I would suggest we need to put ourselves on that tighter timeline, and an actual timeline, because what I think is, while we'll meanwhile talking about it tonight, there will be no timeline that we'll be on if we do it for a year, because we're not violating anything, we don't have any deadline, and we ought to be on a deadline if we're going to seriously try to do this. That's my thoughts on it. I think it's a good idea, but I'd like to see it on a timeline, and I think that's one way to do that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hufnig?
Well, first of all, thank you to all my senior members, as my education continues. So we've heard from that, I'll give you the rookie perspective, so please bear with me in that. First, I want to thank the Budget Committee for my 30-some-odd years in the corporate world. I know how difficult doing a budget is. I will tell you, about half of that career, I made it much, much more difficult, as I think we are, quite frankly. Budget is not a one-time-a-year process. A budget is a 365-day-a-year program. You should be looking at that every single day. Not only our finance director, but we as a group, we have to up our game to understand where we are, whether we're improving any spending or not. Sometimes we approve it, well, yeah, it's okay. If we've got the numbers in front of us, we're going to know if it's okay. Commissioner Tester talked about process. I think there is a huge opportunity to improve our process here. First of all, I want to, I want to say it's very encouraging to see the turnout tonight, to hear the passion. I wish we had this turnout and passion all the time, the engagement. You know, I've heard a lot of good comments and a couple of things that really resonated, partnership, moving forward partnership. I think we've had a partnership with our school board in Washington County and with Johnson City. Can it be better? Yeah, I think so, quite a bit. Since that's the bulk of our funding, is that not a great place to start a process? One thing I'd like to suggest as we move forward, that on a monthly basis, our finance director, Washington County School Board's Finance Director, and Johnson City School Board's Finance Director have a meeting, recapping where they are all on the budget, understanding the challenges they each have, and bring a report back to this commission every single month. I know in my business career, my major customers, I sat down and had a business review every single month with them. I will tell you that that identified opportunities, identified issues we were able to resolve. But you know the most important thing that it did? It developed a working partnership. That's what we need in this county. I hear timing, transparency, planning. Can we improve those? Absolutely. We're talking about, what do we do here tonight? Do we vote and kick the can down the road? I don't know, I mean, just the terminology. I think we need the process to fix it. And I agree, I think we need to take our time, I think we need to be transparent. We are living in an extraordinary time, and it takes for extraordinary actions. We are still in a pandemic. It's not as bad as it was this time a year ago. I don't want to deprive education, especially after what the student's been deprived last year of anything, but I sure don't want to burden our citizens with additional tax. Last year's been tough enough, let's not do that. What I would ask is we all go back and work on a budget and include the school board. Now, I heard a comment, at least don't extend this more than one year. That means they may be willing to work with us. I think that they recognize where we're at from a budget perspective and what our options are. So can we go back to the county? Maybe it's not 1.5, but maybe it's 700 that they can work with us. Same thing with Johnson City. And we work together to solve this problem and bring back the solutions that we can all approve, and we can make all the citizens of this county happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Jones, did you have your hand up before that, or?
I've forgotten whatever it was.
Well-
I apologize, I did not do-
I thought you were next.
Triggs, um, we lost it, sorry.
All right, we have a motion in second on the floor. Go back to that motion and-
One thing, and two, about this, this motion, I would like for us, with this motion, we can go forward and talk about cuts without passing a budget tonight, but my thinking is, I still want, I would still like, and my vote is, to remove the option of taking funds away from our school system. So I think we could, if we wanted to do that, we could still vote this motion, okay? And see how the vote goes. And then all that would do is just change our discussion on what we're doing, and it removes the fact that we're not looking at removing money from our two school systems.
I was wondering, Mr. Chairman, I think there was no motion on the floor to amend. So I think the motion had to be passed the budget, amend it here to say that, because you didn't have a motion to just get it-
I'm not saying we can't do it with your statement, but from a procedural standpoint, there was no motion, you know, this is not like a regular meeting where a committee's made a motion. So that'd have to be, that'd have to be changed, because your motion effectively was to pass the budget with that amendment, and I don't think you want to do that tonight. You're saying just the amendment. There'd have to be-
That is correct, and really and truly, that was my intent with my motion, was just to make an amendment and vote on the amendment, and then we would vote on or not vote on the entire budget.
Yeah, I have, I guess my intent of it, I thought you were amending the numbers-
Yes.
On the tax levy.
Yes.
And that we would be funding the budget, is that correct? With $3 million from surplus.
My general fund? Yes.
Yes. Is that-
There's been no motion to approve the levy, though, Mr. Chairman.
No, he was just amending those numbers on the levy that's in your packet, because we haven't got that far yet. Commissioner Tester?
I'm trying to sit here and sort of say, um, process-wise, and what we're voting on. It seems to me like the trouble may be in the second half of that sentence, about taking it from the record. I think your point is to remove the option of settling that. And maybe, Mr. Chairman, we can still include it the way it works, if we're both partners, and we still have the option of amending further after that, change the general fund card or the other stuff.
I think what Commissioner Wheeler is saying, and I, when we look at Resolution 210614, it's adopting the budget for Washington County, and 210613 is the tax levy. We would need a motion for those if we were passing the budget with those changes.
Mr. Chairman, we didn't get any of this in writing before Tuesday, Wednesday, if you might help me out. But I mean, our rules say we have to get it five days before, so the agenda, so in my mind, I mean, unless we vote, it's been the rule, we can't really move forward with the resolutions. But I don't see why we can't possibly make motions on a direction for it.
Yes, it would have been pointless to meet.
Let me correct you if I'm wrong there.
Well, we'll refer that question to the attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the procedural rules of the commission state that the agenda has a five-day notice rule, and so the agenda was published. The agenda for tonight has the budget discussion and possible action on the budget. So the action that you're currently discussing is entirely appropriate, because that would be action on the proposed budget. The notice requirement of five days is on the agenda with respect to the commission meeting, which, not just a special call, but that's really your Monday night meeting. So these resolutions are expressly scheduled on that agenda, which, an amended one was distributed today, but it did not, the amendments did not impact these resolutions, which were in draft form in the packet that was published on Wednesday. And just while I've got this, if I may, direct you, in case you haven't seen, where the chairman is referencing, your Resolution Number 13, the tax levy resolution, has a be it further resolved, and it is beneath the total tax levy, it's the second one, and there's a reference to 50% of the local option sales tax. So when Commissioner Davenport talks about changing that, that is the reference, and that's in Resolution 210613. And then I think that that would impact your budget generally, and that's in a separate resolution where you adopt the, and I think you'd want to hear from the mayor and the Director of Accounts and Budgets, because those numbers might be moving around. All of that's appropriate within the notice.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Wheeler?
The, one thing that's, I don't, I want to be careful that we don't mislead, and I know that there is no intention of misleading, but I also want to make sure we're all clear. Any vote that we took on that tonight, which, it'd be fine to take a vote on it, but it's an empty gesture, because it might be important if we want to, it's fine if we want to do that, but I shouldn't say an empty gesture, that's the wrong word to use for that. We can certainly signal our intent, but all it takes is a vote of eight people to undo that when we actually pass this resolution. So I want to make sure people understand, they're still going to need to be vigilant about their views on this, because it's not binding. But, you know, again, if we want to do that to show our intent, that's fine, but also, I would point out, you can't amend something that you don't have on the floor to amend. So it would need to be done just as a motion to give some direction to the Budget Committee or give some direction to the commission if we're going to tackle this altogether. But it- but it's, it's not, it's not anything that would keep us from doing this, you know, three months from now, between now and September.
I have a question, Ms. Wilkinson. If you made a motion to approve the tax levy tonight, and you made a motion to approve the budget, and you made, and Commissioner Davenport included those things in that motion, in the motion to amend those items, that would, that would, if they passed to consider the resolution, you, you could do that, correct? Or would it need to go back to the budget committee for consideration?
I think that your best practice would be to have the clearly identified budget in front of you, that if you were seeking an amendment like that, where you're approving a budget, but the budget is not identified, that, that is probably not the best practice. So I would recommend that you take these discussion points and give them to your budget committee to prepare you of the budget that you would be moving to approve, even though, I mean, and I'm saying this because I don't prepare the budget, but I do know that there's a lot of work into it, and I think that talking about changing line items, you would want to have the assurance that all of your colleagues knew what they were approving. And I don't think that I'm hearing that that will be there. If you have an issue that you didn't get to see it three hours ago, I think changing it on the floor might present an issue with respect to the notice on that. So I think best practice would be to send it back to your budget committee and work through a budget that you can all look at and vote on with certainty and having prepared for it.
So you would need to make the motion directing the budget committee to do that and return back with the, with the budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And he could include a direction of how the money would be removed at least, that would be included in your direction for it.
Yes.
And I think, too, I think intent is big. I mean, we have people here that, and we've all talked, and we've had phone calls and stuff like that, and, and I think they deserve to know what the intent of this commission is, whether it's to solve this problem some other way, other than taking money from the school system. And that's, that's what I think we need to, to, to extend our intent of that, it's not being everybody else's.
Can I just like to ask that we do that, that rather than just send it back with the, by some other way, that you, if there's a motion made to that effect, that it be made with something about how we're to do that?
Yes, sir.
That we get...
Our motion did say that, didn't it?
No, sir.
It did.
Okay, well, we have, there's no motion on, there's a motion on the floor to amend something that's going to have to be redone. When it gets redone, if you want to put that in there, that that's how you'd like to direct it, that, that, I think that's fair to the rest of us if we're going to vote on your motion to know how you're proposing to do it. If you want to put that in your new motion, that'll be fine.
Yeah, let's, let's, I tell you, it's better, let's just scrap that motion. Let's just scrap it. Would you like to withdraw that motion, Commissioner Davenport? Commissioner Williams, will you withdraw your second? So...
I almost said same intent wording.
Yes, ma'am. I, I agree, and it sounds like some of my wording. Now, if you would like to make a, a different motion that, that would direct the budget committee, some direction to the budget committee as to what is, what you're proposing.
I'm proposing that this goes back to the budget committee. Remove, um, taking the sales tax away from the school system. Now, this gets all messed up again. Do you want my recommendation for how we cover that, that $3 million, or do you want just to stop that? Do you want the recommendation how to do that, or do you want me, seriously? I mean, because...
I'd prefer to vote on a recommendation with substance rather than to vote, just to do it however, because, and I think it's, then what we're really voting on there, what, in my opinion, is whether we're going to take it from fund balance. That's what I think we're voting on.
Yeah. I think as much as you can, direction as you can give them, it would be very helpful.
No, it's not.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Wilkinson.
For the commission's benefit, the, the issue is not the substance of what Commissioner Davenport is describing. The procedural issue, and correct me if I'm incorrectly stating your position, is that Commissioner Davenport is procedurally proposing to amend something that's not on the floor. And I think that's what Commissioner Wheeler is saying, is that you can't amend a, a resolution that hasn't been moved on. Is that fair, Commissioner Wheeler? That's what you're saying. So it's not the substance of it, it's just the fact that to pull it apart from the resolution itself and, and just state whatever it is that the action, that would be the motion. So it would sound the same, but it wouldn't be tied to the resolution. It's not amending the resolution.
Okay. So direction to go back to the budget committee, and you'd like to know, like I said, remove, remove this, the sales tax part from the schools, that removed, and to look at doing that with our general fund.
Is that the motion?
That's the motion.
Or other cuts. Or other, yeah, yeah, that's fine. Or other cuts, that's fine, yeah.
So we don't want to amend the options if they bring back?
That's, that's right. We're giving...
Well, yes, yes, I want to limit one. I want to limit, that's with school tax. I want to remove that.
So, so are we just taking out the option on the sales tax for the schools? Is that, is that the only option we're going to take out, or?
Only one I remember.
Commissioner Jones?
So I feel like this kind of puts us back into a problem of process again, because now the budget committee have already put a billion hours into the budget in front of us. Go back, maybe they can find some things to cut, but I tend to lean on Commissioner Malone's statement that going to cut a bunch of people, can't find something to cut, and we end up taking it out of fund balance, and now we're in a precarious situation with our, with our budget. And, you know, the original thought was till next year, and then there was the thought, no, let's get this taken care of. By what process do we ensure that, that they don't meet next week, cover it with the fund balance, we all pass it through, and we're still here again a year from now with an even worse looking situation? How do we prevent that from happening?
I think if we prevent that from happening, that whatever they bring us before, before we approve it, we put something in motion that, I don't think that's citizens' made tonight, because of the money.
Commissioner Edens?
Can I ask you one question?
Yes. Mr. Meredith, would you quickly glance through there and see what our fund balance reserve is?
General fund, Danny? General fund?
The reserve fund, yes.
Commissioner Tester, reference this.
I think my answer to your question is, I think they're Monday night or another meeting. We all come back with that.
June 30th, June 30th, a 21-year project, general fund down to $16.44 million.
Thank you, Mr. Meredith. $16.44 million.
Can the amount that we're proposing to take to cover the school, the school board's receiving their full amount come from that without a hindrance that the other commissioners are talking about?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Edens, I couldn't hear you either.
Can that, the total amount that we're talking about taking from our school systems, can that amount be removed from that number that Mr. Meredith just quoted without putting us in limbo or in a bind budget-wise?
I think, let me refer to Mr. Meredith or the mayor that wants to answer that. I, I think he, the mayor is the chief financial officer, so I'd, I'd prefer the, one of those to answer that.
In response to that question, it clearly would take us from our fund balance policy, which is pretty standard business metric fund balance policy, not once four months worth of cash flow in the, in the current budget cycle. The, really, any, any amount that you take out of fund balance from that number will take us below that policy.
Is that a county policy or something we're legally bound to?
No, we're not legally bound to it. It's a self-imposed policy. It's a, as Mike mentioned, it would impact our bond rating. If we were going to market by bond rating, if we were going to ask for new ratings, if we violate our policy, we're going to have a policy that would certainly, you know, pay more than we're going to pay now. We're not anticipating more market markets, and that's really not a significant issue, but there is an issue of cash flow position, because, you know, that, that number, if you have to think about it, it's based on a number at one point in time, and that is the annual G, or this, which is, we have four months away from when we're going to begin to receive revenue from the next property tax cycle. So our lowest point of cash flow is typically in October, and, you know, that's why our fund balance is replaced, is that we have cash, we need our monthly obligation to the power side of the budget one month a year. It's not good, this would not be a good practice, and we just have fund balance of $1 million quota, which...
How long has that policy been in place? Do you have...
Oh, since maybe 14 or 15.
Well, I just want to point out that I know Dr. Barnett made the point that protecting their reserves so that they have four months of fund balance was really important, and, and I respect that, and that's some of why I don't want to, want to take their money. So keeping us at four months is, is also very important, and I think we need to, we need to be thinking about that. And I'm not saying no way, I'm just saying if we're going to dip down, we need to do the right thing by putting together a very effective process for bringing it, bringing it back up. I already made my suggestion on how that might happen if we aren't able to find $3 million somewhere else.
Commissioner, have fun.
Process. What I would love to see, and I understand the burden that I'm going to request here, but what I'd love to see is the budget commission bring back to us multiple options. We can raise taxes by 15 cents. We can cut the school board by $3 million. We can eliminate the highway department. Give us those hard facts, and I'm being facetious there, but I'm saying that so that we have a clear vision of what our options are. How much pain are we willing to inflict upon ourselves, and which direction do we want to focus that pain? Just very clear, if we have the options in front of us, I think that'll allow us make the hard decisions that we have to make. Right now, I, I can't tell you, I understand clearly what the options are. Nobody wants to take it away from the schools. Schools don't want to give it up. You know, we told everybody in the school system, okay, you're going to get all your money, but your property taxes are going to go up a dollar. That might change some attitudes, I don't know. But I'm just saying, let's, let's understand our options. Three or four options, in their estimation, are the best alternatives. Is, is that, while work intensive, I understand, is that a reasonable request? Is that develop a process for us going forward? Just a question.
Commissioner Wheeler?
I, I think that a better, if you're going to do that, I mean, I don't know why you picked that five of us create those options, because then we, we're going to be in the same situation the five of us are in right now, that we've, you know, looked at some hard options and we've taken some pretty big criticisms, including the suggestion that we haven't cut, and we did make significant cuts last year to the budget before it came to you all, with the help of our elected officials at our request, and significant cuts. But I think the whole commission ought to, you know, everybody, anybody that's, that's ready to vote for this tonight needs to say that they're willing to come back and show us where the first million in cuts is going to come, because, at least for that part of the option, because if we're going to do this, it's going to need to be a combination. And surely, if, if we're talking about that we can cut this spending, each of us can come up with a list of the first million dollars of cuts, get it turned in, and then once all of us have done it, let them pu, send them out to everybody. Because it's not fair for half of us to do it and half of us not. But I think, I do think it's a pretty big ask to say to the budget committee, with everything else we've, we've tried to work on on this budget, to say, you know, you all come up with, with options, and then we'll come back together and, and tell you why, you know, we don't, they don't work, and that's fine, but I just think a better solution would be for the commission to do this. So I'd, I'd ask that we, I'd make a motion that we amend your motion so that I can vote for it, that says that each of the commissioners will turn in a million dollars worth of cuts by the first of, of, no, by the 10th of July, and that those two, Ms. Green, and then she'll, after each commissioner's done that, she'll disseminate them to the rest of us.
We have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Malone. Floor is open for discussion.
Do we not have another motion on the floor?
I moved to...
He's, he moved to amend the motion.
Pardon me. I moved to amend his motion.
All right. Any discussion? You know, the county commission's a unique individual body. I've sat with county commissions at different times in my life, and, you know, it's even, we've even come in here and cut line item, flying item, flying item, with 25 commissioners. And it's a pretty tough thing to do. And, you know, I've sat in here and voted on a refrigerator one night, and called the roll on a refrigerator. So those, those are very interesting things, and, and I understand going through the budget and picking out just certain things or certain items, and I know that Commissioner Wheeler is, and the budget committee has worked very, very hard on getting those things done and, and going through, and a lot of times you don't see the things that are cut, but oftentimes it's the things that, that are negotiated to a different year or, or worked hard to work out in a, in a, in some other form of capital money. So there's a lot of that went on behind the scenes in there, and, and there's a lot of investigation when you start cutting $3 million out of a budget. I've made a few mistakes in cutting budgets sometime, and I admit to those mistakes. Maybe I, maybe I cut something I didn't mean to. I think Mr. Grandy was on that commission with me that time. But with that said, we have a motion and a second for that amendment. Anybody else like to comment on that? Commissioner Jones?
I'd just like a summary of the motion and the amendment. I could take stab at it if you want, or somebody, somebody else has maybe written down.
Madam Clerk, do you have the, do you have the, first, the original motion written down, please? Commissioner Davenport? Commissioner Davenport?
I'm sorry, I meant to, I meant to ask Ms. Wilkinson, I'm sorry. How, how let you off the hook?
Tell me if this, if this conforms with what y'all heard, was that there was a recommendation to send back to the Budget Committee to remove the split on the sales tax and review filling the gap with the general fund balance or other cuts. And then it was amended to add that with each commissioner submitting a million dollars of proposed cuts to Ms. Green by July 10th. Is that correct?
The million dollars is what we're considering.
Mayor has offered, and I think we ought to consider taking up, that, that'll even, now, we on the Budget Committee, we've got memos about the maintenance of efforts and things like that, that you all don't have, and that we're going to end up with a quagmire of recommendations that couldn't happen to begin with, and there, there are ramifications. We'll have employees worried, and we'll have office holders worried. So he's offered that what might work better is if we come, is if we have another amendment after we vote mine down, to come back together as a whole and let them kind of, what they do for the Budget members when you're new to the Budget Committee, is go through and give you a list of what the maintenance of efforts are, and kind of go through that so that you have a better idea where to cut, and maybe work on cuts together rather than, than trying to do this individually. So I'm going to suggest that you vote mine down.
Commissioner Tester?
Can he just withdraw his motion?
You have to vote to let me, I think, but I would, I'd file that.
Or you'll just, there's no objection to it?
There's no objection to Commissioner Wheeler withdrawing his motion? Saying no objection to with, with the commission, we consider it withdrawn.
Thank you.
All right. All right, we're back to the original motion.
Do we have the original motion to read?
Could you read the original motion for us one more time?
I'm happy to. Commissioner Davenport's motion is a recommendation to send back to Budget with a removal of the division of the sales tax and a review of filling the gap with general fund balance or other cuts. I've already stated, that's what I have.
Oh, question.
Commissioner Tester?
Can he just add the part that Commissioner Wheeler was talking about, about having a workshop and then presenting the options to us?
I think the Budget Committee could have a workshop, if, if...
Yeah, that is what he suggested. I mean, it sounds like that's the direction we're trying to go, but...
I can call us back in a special session.
It, it might even be better, we were all prepared to be here expecting a lot more people to talk, and the mayor's offered to start that tonight. And I would suggest that we just take him up on that. We don't have to amend the motion, we just all, we're here, let's start that process tonight, let them lead us through some of this tonight, get us started on what we could cut.
Commissioner Jones?
I'm still just stuck on, this is, this seems like a reasonable stockgap measure for now, but I just want to make absolute sure that we have a way of bringing this to closure. So I'm all for staying around, happy to do that. Don't really want to fall back on the Budget Committee. Are we, do we have any way of knowing how this will conclude?
We...
Not yet. You're sin, you're...
We have, we have a motion and second.
Budget Committee, so no, you don't.
So it's like a wing and a prayer that we're going to vote this through, and then, like, not, we don't know how we're going to resolve it. Is that, is that where we're at right now?
Well, this is just a recommendation to the Budget Committee.
Okay, okay, that helps.
I mean, I mean, they're going to have to make cuts, or, or, or balance with fund balance, either one, so, and that'll, that'll have to come back here. Isn't that how you see it, Commissioner Wheeler?
I, I think the way you say recommendations is correct, because I mean, that you can, the motion's not stated as a recommendation, but that doesn't mean it won't come back the way the Budget Committee feels it can come back. I mean, so no, there is no, but that may be that we come back and say we should meet once a week between now and September and get this thing passed after everybody's met together. But we can start and try to look at it and see what options we can come up with.
All right. We had the question called there just a moment ago, and, and we've, we've kind of been a little liberal with that, but we appreciate that. Now, the clerk has stopped me now. All right, now, Allison, if you'll read it back one more time.
I'm happy to.
We're going to go ahead, and as soon as you're finished, we're going to switch to the voting screen, and we'll cast our vote.
And what I have is that this is Commissioner Davenport's motion, and it was seconded by Commissioner Williams. A rec, a request to send back to the Budget Committee for recommendation, a removal of the sales tax split, and review options to fill the gap with the general fund balance or other cuts.
That's correct. All right. Madam Clerk, if you'll switch us to the voting screen, please.
He's got, he's stepped out. You'd be aware of that.
Oh, yes, he...
Well, he's on his way back.
He has been...
I'm going to tell that we just...
Commissioner Kate, we're going to wait on you to vote.
Sorry.
But that's okay, because that'll give Allison the opportunity to read the motion one more time. Allison, when Commissioner Kate gets seated, if you'll read that motion one more time, so he knows exactly what we're discussing and, and what the motion was in case he forgot We are preparing to take a bit of a, a 10-minute recess here when this vote finishes. Okay, Allison, if you'll read it one more time.
Really, it's a motion by Commissioner Davenport to send back to the Budget Committee a request to remove the sales tax division and review filling the gap with the general fund balance or other cuts. And it was seconded by Commissioner Williams. And the question was called by who?
Davenport.
Davenport.
Davenport. Thank you.
All right. If you'll go ahead and cast your vote and lock it in.
Well, maybe you and Jerome have the wrong one, you know, I don't know. Oh, mine's a fingerprint version, yeah.
Madam Clerk, we've, all right, Jerome.
I don't give that out, miss.
I told you, you, you may have to get Commissioner Edens to work on yours too, you know. He may have a dead battery. That's happened to me here before. Here comes our technical lady. Susan, Susan, well, well, this is a roll call, though, isn't it? Maybe soon we'll be working off those iPads, and Susan's been promising, yes?
Can we hold it up off the table? Maybe?
Oh, right. All right, good job, Susan. Right, Madam Clerk, if you'll announce the vote, we have 14 yes, zero absent, and the resolution, or the motion passes. So that, that motion sends this item back to the Budget Committee with these recommendations. So the Budget Committee does meet tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m., and before we continue discussing the budget and take up this generous offer that the mayor, mayor's made, made us tonight, is that, is that something that, that we want to do, is continue to stay and learn more about the possible cuts or what's in the budget that the mayor's made us? Commissioner Harris?
This is actually the first time I've ever got a hard copy of this. I would love to have some time to go sit down and go through it myself before sitting here tonight looking it over. All I've seen is on the internet. It's nice to have one that you can look at. I don't have the capability even at my house to print anything out, because our internet don't even work where I live right now, so it's, it's hard to read stuff on your computer or phone. It'd be nice to look through it. I've offered a few cuts, but, you know, offered some last year, and they never went anywhere, so I hope if we're going to cut, that we all get serious on them. Everybody comes up with one, because, you know, I took heat last year from a lot of the library people and the news media, because I think I was the only person to come up with any kind of a cut. So if we're going to cut, we all need to, and I understand what you were saying, Mr. Wheeler, you know, put everybody on the spot, but just let one be on the spot, or you be on the spot. If we're going to cut, let's cut. If we're not going to cut, we just need to do what Commissioner Davenport said here tonight, pass this thing with the $3 million out of the general fund and not waste our time dealing with all of it. So we got to do it one way or the other, but if we're going, really going to cut, let's all get in the game. And if we're not, I think we need to do that tonight and not drag this thing on.
We, we may have a notice issue for a Monday meeting as far as the, as far as the budget stuff goes, so we couldn't, I do announce a 9:00 a.m. budget meeting in the morning, but I don't know if that'll happen until I talk to the mayor about that. I, I kind of doubt we'll, we'll do that in the morning. Is that correct, Mayor?
I, I actually, I thought it was on the agenda.
It is, it is, but I, I don't know with the changes to the budget, we would be able, we can't get, we can't get all the things in, the million dollars in cuts and, and all that. I don't think we can get that worked out by Monday and get the notice right to, could we, Allison? I mean...
But just to be clear, the notice already stands that the resolution is on there. These, these items are on there. But that may not mean that all the commission is comfortable with their time to review it, those are, those are separate, or that the public and the commission has seen those numbers. I think that's, those are two separate issues.
I guess, I guess it puts the commission in a situation where they're going to have to get them million-dollar cuts or something, something back in here pretty quick.
I think we would, I think Monday night, we can, it's on the agenda.
It is, it is.
We, you know, we're not going to be bringing back, you know, a recommendation on cuts on Monday night.
Monday night.
But we can, we can further discuss this Monday.
Yes.
About what process we're going to take.
As far as action on the budget, I wouldn't expect any of that on Monday night. That's what I'm saying. Commissioner Williams?
I want to know what the total four-month reserve needs to be.
Mr. Meredith?
It needs to be, I think, maximum, in, in, I want to do my, that's in the program. Right now, with the current, with the current budgeted spend of $44,945,000, you need to have a minimum of $14,980 for your four-month reserve, and then we also have almost $2 billion in restricted funds, so you need to have almost $17 billion.
Commissioner Carter?
Mr. Meredith, is that a fiscal year ending figure, or is that something we need to look at every day?
Uh, I mean, it's, I mean, it is a, that is always a snapshot in time. We look at it any, I mean, essentially any word when we do.
Okay, so it, it needs to be that way when fiscal year ends, June 30th, that, that, those numbers need to, okay, thank you.
Or at, at the beginning, when you set the budget. So that's when you're applying the fund balance.
So we're going to be below that? Well, that reflects the next year's budget. This year's, okay. Because we're going to be at 16.9, it's a, 16.4 this year. But that was on a different calculation because our budgets were, right?
Right. Lower, lower spend.
Yep. Okay.
What's the commission's pleasure?
To go home and eat?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Williams, what was it?
I couldn't hear you, I'm, I, I...
I wanted to go home and eat.
Well, Commissioner, have fun.
From an efficiency standpoint, and we, we all understand the ground rules that the Budget Committee has been working so diligently on, and we're not wasting their time and hours either tonight or via some communication. If we could get a list of where maintenance of effort have to be maintained, where we have to have reserves maintained, what those reserves are, and I really would like to see it in hard copy that's distributed so that we all know, we all have a reference sheet, sheet. Nobody can say, no, I didn't understand it, you, you've got it on paper. I, I think that would be extremely helpful for everyone moving forward, just very basically one sheet, here's the ground rules. Is that a fair request?
It would be a lot more than one sheet.
Oh, yeah, yeah, whatever length is required, that's, I'm sure, yeah. And, and quite honestly, I mean, if legal, that would probably be something great to publish on websites so that all the citizens understand the restraints and restrictions that we work under.
You might block that on the speaker's end, too.
Yeah. Or, I mean, if we just, if we could even direct them, I mean, just if someone wanted to know...
Commissioner Edens?
Is there a way that we can get a figure? I don't know if there is or not, but is there a way that we can get a figure of what we've voted for in the past year for non-essential items? I know this is not going to be popular with some people on this commission, but I've been here a long time. I've been here since 2005, and we vote for musical festivals, and we vote for performing arts centers, and we vote to give away money, to donate money, however you want to call it. I would like to know on average how much money this commission donates annually, because I think if we had that number and we put our, our non-essentials off the table before we, I mean, until we consider our essential job here, which is the infrastructure of the county, and taking care of the county taxpayers, to take care of our students in the schools and our school systems, our police department, the sheriff's department, I mean, the essentials that we are required to fund is what we should focus on. I know of more than one occasion where the commission, over the years I've been on it, has voted to give a million dollars away at one time in a donation. And I would like to know what the average of what we donate, and if each commissioner could be diligent. Before you vote, I know, you know, our county needs these things. I'm not saying they don't. They're important, and they have a place. They really do. But this county commission should be focused on the essential functions of what we're required and responsible for before we ever vote to donate money. And I think the number would be staggering on an average. And I think the number would be staggering on an average over the time that I've been on this commission and what we voted to donate away. And a lot of times to people that would have successfully accomplished their task without the donation, in my opinion, if they did their own due diligence. So, I think we really need to look at what we're giving away compared to what we're responsible for and focus on the responsibles.
Thank you, Commissioner. Hang on, what, Commissioner Jones, did you have your hand up?
I did. I just wanted to throw out the possible idea that we set a special call meeting in the future. Could be late July, could be August. That kind of puts stake in the ground and, and puts a date out there that we are accountable to for coming back and, and making a decision on the budget. I don't know if that's a good idea, but I still feel like I would feel better about going home tonight, knowing that we're going to get this done in the next few months at least.
Commissioner Wheeler?
I think the only problem with, I don't, I don't know who we're asking to make that list, but every one of us would probably get a different list if we went through and decided what we were responsible for. And there is no clear, you're not going to find something in the law books that says, you know, what we are specifically responsible for like that. But the other problem with that is, if you're talking about donations, technically by law, what we give the fire departments is a donation. But I doubt any one of us in this room would think that that was not something that we were responsible for. Technically, we're not, and it's a donation. That's why it's listed with the other items that are, that are where we're funding outside agencies. So, who are, who are we asking to make that list and how do they make that decision? When every one of us in here may, may come up with a different list, we all have last year's budget. Now, this year's budget, we got it now, the proposed budget, but we all have last year's budget. So, I, any of us can make our own list of what is essential and not essential in that budget. But to ask anybody else outside this 15-member group to decide what is our responsibility, that's not their, I mean, that's up to the 15 of us to decide what is our responsibility. And what eight of us say is our responsibility, that's what's going to happen.
You're at over.
So, the response, the legal responsibility is set by, by state law. If you want to look at that, then you're going to be talking about things on that list like the fire departments, which I personally, and I don't think anybody else would either, including you. But, you know, that's not something that I would say is not our responsibility at this point. You know, funding schools over a certain level is not our responsibility, but we sure, I take it as our responsibility, but legally it's not.
I'll go ahead and recognize you, Commissioner Edens.
Thank you. What I'm trying to say is, I think it would be very important, very prudent for each commissioner before we consider voting, I agree with you, I don't think anybody would say the fire department's not essential, even though it is technically a donation. I agree with that. What I'm trying to say is, when we donate money, when I say donate, I'm talking about when we give to entities in our county that want help to get started or help to get sustainable on a private venture. When it's our choice, not our purpose, to send this money here or there. And we all know what those things are, even if I didn't word it correctly, we all know what those things are. We all see them come and we've all seen them go, and we've all voted for them, well, we all haven't voted for them. That's the reason I vote no on all of them, because we don't know what's coming down the road. We have a budget to pass, and we have things that we are responsible for. And we're giving money to things we're not responsible for, and it's taxpayer money that we're giving. And I, I don't think, I can't say for sure, in my heart and mind, I can say for sure, that I don't think I've ever voted for one of them. Including this microphone I'm talking into and that screen I'm voting on up there. The night we approved that, I made the comment that if you can't hear me, I'll speak louder. I'll call out my voice vote, roll call vote, however you want to do it. And this was not, in the big scheme of things, a large expense. But if I voted no, because it costs taxpayer money to buy this microphone that I'm talking on and look at that screen I'm looking at up there. And that's money we didn't need to spend, in my opinion. And I may have been the only one that voted no that night. But I just feel like there's things that we are responsible for as county commissioners, to fund and to be good stewards of the county taxpayers' money without increasing our taxes. And to fund the things we have to fund with, and I think we can do that. I think if we looked at the figures, if there was any way we could, and I don't know that there is. I just feel like if we were more thought-worthy when we give certain entities money that are private, for lack of a better term, they are good for the county. I'm not saying that. But it's not our responsibility to fund them with taxpayer dollars when we're not even asking the taxpayers if they're for it. We're voting on everything we vote on with the taxpayers of this county's money. And I just feel like before we vote to spend one penny of taxpayer money, it ought to be something that is worthwhile countywide, that is purposeful, purposeful for us to do, that it's our, it's our job to do. It's our requirement to do. And I think if we did that, and that alone, at the end of the year, we probably wouldn't have a budget problem. And we could have a surplus of money to, to, to give to these people if they want it then. But we do it all year long without thinking of the end result, without thinking when we're sitting here in front of, I mean, I think about it, but. You know, at my house, you have to tighten, I've said it before, you have to tighten the belt. I mean, we're not a rich family. We, we survive. We do the best we can. We have what we can, when we can. Sometimes that's a lot, and sometimes that's a little. But I don't go to town and spend money that I know I'm not going to have to sustain myself throughout the year. And I think that's how we got to look at taxpayer money. And I think if we do, we won't find ourselves in this situation. And we won't be taking money from anybody that we're responsible to as commissioners.
All right, Commissioner Carrigan, we're going to finish up with your comments and we're going to take a recess.
Well, I was going to, I concur with Commissioner Harris. I, I think this is weighty issues that we need time to reflect upon it, to read, and to make good decisions. We're talking about, you know, the taxpayers, we're talking about jobs, we're talking about children, education. I think we, we need to take the time to read, reflect, and take this issue up Monday night. And with that in mind, I would make a motion that we adjourn and take this up Monday night.
Motion to adjourn made by Commissioner Carrigan. We have seconded by Commissioner Harris.
Can I add one thing to my second? It would be nice Monday night or before Monday night even, just for me. I don't know if anybody else would like to have it, but I'd like to have a breakdown like the school system gave us in this packet of last year and this year side by side. Instead of having to go through and find my old book and try to look at it, look at this, you know, have a breakdown. And inside this packet we got tonight, the school systems is like that. It shows what they spent last year and this year. But ours only has this year, so I think that would give us a starting point to look and see easily, without having to dig through two or three books and look at a computer. Or if I could get it anyways, I don't know if anybody else would want it.
Right, I'm sure, sure they'll try to provide that for us. No, Monday's our regular meeting. All right, we've got a motion to second. All in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. All opposed like a son? The ayes have it. We're adjourned.